Monday, September 12th, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members as well as yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on specific agenda items, please submit your request to speak in the chat. Directions to do so are located in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input on a specific bill, please insert your name and address in the chat, and whether you are in support of or opposition of that bill, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. You will be given five minutes to speak during the public input. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat during that time, and the council president will call on you. And you will be given three minutes to speak during privilege of the floor. Again, insert your full name and your address. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say that disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and their actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we will have our invocation by Pastor Mark Lance of Christian Center Church. Welcome.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be together. Lord, I thank you for this council that has this city's and county's best interest in mind, and I pray tonight that your spirit would give wisdom and understanding and insight on everything that is on this agenda, and Lord, that the people of this city, county, and this area, Lord, that would be bettered because of what happens in this meeting tonight. We pray for each council member for protection, for strength, for understanding and wisdom that comes only from you. We know that each of us are limited in and of ourselves, but Lord, with you, your word said that all things are possible, and we believe that. So, Lord, we just pray for your will to be done, for your hand to be upon this area and upon every home. Father, bless these council members for their time, their service, their effort and energy. Bless them financially, relationally, physically, spiritually. And, Lord, we thank you for being with us in this meeting tonight, and we ask it in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Clerk Jones, may we have the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Andrew is here.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President Niskoski?
Present.
President McBride?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we have a special resolution commemorating the life of Congresswoman Jackie Walorsky. Bill number ten dash twenty-two. Sponsors are Counselor Eli Wax and Troy Warner. Would you please make your presentation?
Sure. I think we'll just leave it to the resolution itself if I may read it?
Yes.
This is a special resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, commemorating and celebrating the life and public service of Congresswoman Jackie R. Walorsky. Whereas Congresswoman Jackie Walorsky was a native daughter of the City of South Bend, who was born on August 17th, 1963, raised in the Gilmore Park neighborhood, and attended Hay Elementary School and Riley High School. And whereas Jackie returned to South Bend after attending school at Liberty Baptist College and Taylor University to begin her life's work in public service as a television reporter. And whereas Jackie continued her career as the Executive Director of the St. Joseph County Humane Society, Director of Advancements at Ansela College, Director of Membership at the St. Joseph Chamber of Commerce, and Director of Annual Giving at the University of South Bend. And whereas Jackie's service to others took a dramatic and focused turn in 2000, when she and her husband Dean Swire moved to Romania and founded Impact International, a foundation to provide medical supplies and attention to children in need. And where she performed Christian missionary work. And whereas Jackie's service in Romania resulted in being awarded the honor of Commander of the Order of the Star of Romania, Romania's Civil Order awarded by the President of Romania. And whereas Jackie returned to Indiana in 2004 to be with her father as a self-decline and became a member of Southgate Church in South Bend. And whereas Jackie was elected to the Indiana House of Representatives in 2004, where she served her fellow Hoosiers until November 2010. And whereas Jackie became Congresswoman Walorsky in January 2013, when she began representing Hoosiers in the United States House of Representatives, where she served as the ranking member of the House Ethics Committee. And whereas Congressman Walorsky, along with her Communications Director, Emma Thompson, her District Director and St. Joseph County Republican Chairman Zach Potts, and another motorist, Edith Schmucker, tragically died in an automobile accident on August 3rd, 2022. And whereas the outpouring of grief for Congressman Walorsky came from those who knew her, along with those who knew of her, and including coworkers, politicians, constituents, veterans, family, and friends with common themes such as service, passion, dedication, determination, caring, and hardworking. And whereas statesman is defined in part as a wise, skillful, and respected political leader. And whereas through her local, national, and international public service, there was never a doubt that she represented her district, her state, and her country with the zeal of a stateswoman, with a statesman. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council offers its sincere condolences to Dean Swire, Jackie's husband of 27 years, her mother Martha, her brothers David and Keith, and all other family members and friends. Two, the Common Council, along with Jackie's constituents, mourn the loss of a true statesman. Three, thank you for your life of public service. Four, you will never be forgotten. And five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you so much.
Troy wanted to...
Yes, I want to see if Counselor Warner, if you have any comments.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Wax for putting the resolution together. My condolences go out to the families and the friends of the four people that were killed in this tragedy and to our Republican colleagues and the other Republican elected officials that continue to mourn this loss. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to see if anyone has any comments. Counselor Hammond?
Thank you. I also want to thank Councilmen Wax and Councilman Warner for bringing this forward. I think it is very important for us as a council to acknowledge that we do not have to necessarily agree with someone ideologically to be able to recognize their true service and the goodness of their heart as they have served such a long time as Jackie has, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Hey, thank you. I appreciate it. Hey, good job bringing this resolution forward. I'm going to say something. I had an opportunity to meet with Jackie and Zach Potts as well over at Beck's Lake a few months ago, as a matter of fact, and I never had an opportunity to meet her. I think I've met Zach in passing a few times. Very nice, very warm, very welcoming people. I had an opportunity to talk about some of the issues of Beck's Lake and what needed to be done and how things are going to get done as it relates to federal code and EPA Department, et cetera. We were having like these back-and-forth discussions that had gone on up until, you know, their demise. And as a matter of fact, I owe Zach a text message because he had asked me to do some work for him on his end so I can give it back to their department so we can get some more work done. And I just really hate that that, you know, happened. I just, it hurt my heart because I remember being in the airport when I got the message. I thought that it was like a prank or a joke or something because those things don't happen. And obviously it did, and so you don't, it doesn't make you feel good whether that was your enemy or your friend or not. It's just something that happens, and somebody loved her and loved him, and the young lady as well that was in the backseat. But I enjoyed her leadership, you know, as related to what we had going on, and I really appreciated what was going on as it relates to helping people in the second district. So my condolences as well to the family. Thank you guys for bringing that forward.
Thank you. I would just like to say also thank you. Jackie was definitely a trailblazer for our state and across the country and very kind, strong woman and role model for us. And my heart goes out to her as we put out by the council our condolences to everyone who was involved. So I just want to say thank you to the council who put forth this resolution. And I see we have hands up by Counselor White.
Yes, thank you, Council President McBride. I would like to thank the two sponsors for bringing forth this resolution in honor of Congresswoman Jackie Walorsky. I've had the opportunity throughout the years to have real good conversations with her, but also to have the opportunity to discuss some critical issues facing our county, but also our state. And my heart goes out to her family. My heart goes out to all the other ones who lost their lives in this tragic accident. She was a very strong, outspoken person who you never had to think about who she was. She stood by her words. She was a hard worker. She was very committed to the state of Indiana and also to our county. So again, my heart goes out to her family and to those who also lost their lives in this tragic accident. And she was a very, very, very strong person who really stood her ground and one that was consistent throughout all the times that I had the opportunity to work with her. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Also, Counselor Lee?
Yes, thank you, President McBride. I want to thank Councilman Wax and Councilman Warner for bringing this resolution. I met Jackie Walorsky probably about 17 years ago, in my early days of pastoring. And she was fighting for the rights of parents against Eli Lilly, who was looking to, they were working on some kind of legislation where they could go into the schools and basically say these kids need to be on drugs or not. And so she was so adamant about it that she started meeting with local pastors, and I was included in that list. And what she said, she was committed. She worked hard at trying to make things better for people. And her passing is just a reminder to all of us that tomorrow's not promised and that we have to make the most of every single day. So we got to treat people right. We got to love people. And we got to try to do the things that we can do in order to make our communities better and serve at a high level. So thank you all for this resolution, and I support it.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to entertain a motion to resolve to the Committee of the Whole.
So move.
Second.
Second.
There's been motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, the Committee of the Whole is now in session, and this is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and separate committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Jones, would you please give a second reading to Bill thirty-two dash twenty-two?
Thirty-two twenty-two, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 316 North Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. Bill thirty-two twenty-two came before zoning and annexation earlier today, and it comes to the Committee of the Whole with no recommendation.
Okay. Is the petitioner... Were they able to get the petitioner in?
Yes.
Okay. I ask that you state your name and address and share with key points regarding the bill that is before us.
I don't think the petitioner is here, as he was not earlier.
We do not see the petitioner in the room. If the petitioner for this item is here or online, please identify yourself.
There's no petitioner.
At this time, I guess we'd request a table in order to try to get the petitioner to the next council meeting.
Do you have a date?
The next council meeting is...
Nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six?
September twenty-sixth is the next council meeting.
I move the table to nine twenty-six.
Second.
All right, it's been a motion and second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Bill thirty-two dash twenty-two has been tabled until nine twenty-six. Hopefully, we'll be able to have the petitioner there the next time. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill forty dash twenty-two a second reading?
Yes. Forty twenty-two, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at seventeen oh-two West Western Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Likewise, this bill came before zoning and annexation this afternoon and comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present? Present? I ask that you state your name and your address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. This is Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the City of South Bend with offices located on the fourteenth floor of the County City Building. If you could please share the team's screen, I'll go through the presentation. The property owner or petitioner is requesting a special exception at seventeen oh-two West Western. The special exception is to allow for a retail establishment in the UF Urban Flex District. The Urban Flex District is typically something that you would find integrated into the neighborhood, and as such, there are special provisions put on there that allow the council the opportunity to review the petition and make sure it's consistent with the neighborhood. In this case, the property is located along Western Avenue, which is a heavily traveled corridor already. It's been a longstanding non-residential use. It's been a beauty salon for many, many years. And so the transition from a service use to a retail use at this location would not really have an impact on the surrounding community. Because the site's already located along a major corridor, a retail use of this location should not adversely affect any of the surrounding properties. And this comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner is here as well.
Petitioner, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Andrew Hoffman, one-six-nine-two-five, Londonberry Lane, South Bend, Indiana.
Is there anything you would like to tell us about this particular property or what you're about to do next?
No, I am the sole survivor of, we own the Louver Door next door. I'm just trying to get rid of the property. I finally found somebody who owns the mobile home, or the Boost Mobile Store, four blocks down. He wants to own the property. I'm willing to sell it to him. It would be a good fit for him since he's renting right now, so.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? And I can't really see on the screen, so if you do, you can just go ahead. And if you have any questions, just state your name and say, "I got a question." If not...
There's no one.
No one? Okay. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill forty dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public, virtual public, expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one expressing interest to speak in opposition as well.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill forty dash twenty-two is now closed. Councilmembers, if you would like to make any statements, this is your opportunity to make a statement.
Sure. Pastor Lee, I'm reading through this document. It has really no bearing on what's going to happen, but it says Councilmanic District Six. I think that that's wrong. I think that's second district.
It's the sixth.
Yeah, it's six. Where does it break off at there?
It goes all the way to Caziasco, or all the way to Walnut. My district goes all the way east to just past Caziasco and you're south of me on Western.
Okay.
Because that's right next to Louver Door. I used to eat there at least twice a week. I used to love that restaurant.
Yeah, but when we changed boundary, yeah, but when we changed boundaries, I got a tremendous amount of that area, Jackson Street and the ones proceeding west. It may be different right now. It may break off right there where we're at, but I did pick up all of that at one point. It may cut off somewhere else. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, because I did a lot of door-to-door in that.
Yeah, I did too, so we probably confused people.
I know it's the sixth.
Okay, well, any comments from anybody? Because if not, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill forty dash twenty-two.
I make a motion to approve Bill forty dash twenty-two and send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. It's been moved, and it will be sent to the council, full council, with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you give substitute Bill forty-two dash twenty-two a second reading?
Public, forty-two twenty-two, public hearing, substitute bill forty-two twenty-two, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Replacing and Amending Chapter Two, Article One, Sections Two dash one through and including two dash nine of the South Bend Municipal Code to update and clarify procedures for the South Bend Common Council in the office of the city clerk. Do we have, don't they have to vote to hear the substitute?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to hear the substitute version of Bill forty-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, call the roll.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. The Rules Committee met this afternoon and bring to you the substitute bill of Bill forty-two dash twenty-two with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
My name is Bob Palmer. I'm the attorney for the South Bend Common Council with offices here on the fourth floor of the County City Building. The highlights of this bill is to basically modernize and clarify and make the procedures used by the Common Council in passing ordinances and appointing members to boards and commissions compliant with the actual practice of the Common Council. Prior to tonight, most of these ordinances have not been reviewed in any date detail since 1977, and the last time before that was 1966. A lot has changed. It is reflected by the fact that we have members of the council participating by remotely. So the highlights of these changes, first of all, under the current version of the ordinance, Section two dash two M states that the council points various members to commissions, boards, et cetera. Because of the delay that sometimes ensues from waiting for the entire council to meet again, this amendment gives the discretion to the council president to make those appointments. Another highlight is a situation which occurred earlier this year when both the president and the vice president were unavailable to attend the meeting. The current version of the ordinance does not specify what occurs in that situation. The amendment now states that the members of the council who are present at that meeting should make a motion and elect a person to preside over that single meeting when the president and the vice president are not available. Probably the biggest change is we've made the ordinance gender neutral now. We don't assume that the council officers are going to be males, and we don't refer to people as council man or council woman. They are council members. That language has been updated in several different sections of the ordinances. The amendments also try to streamline and expedite how a resolution or ordinance gets placed on a committee agenda, standing committee agenda. The present, or the present ordinance does not require any notification to the standing committee chair of a bill that's going to be heard by that committee until he or she sees it either Thursday or Friday before the committee meeting on... until he or she sees it either Thursday or Friday before the committee meeting on Monday. The new amendment requires the sponsors of the ordinance or resolution to approach the chair of the standing committee beforehand and have the chair sign off on it as an acknowledgement that the chair has seen the draft resolution or ordinance and approves for it to be heard in that committee. Another just small technical correction. We've added a provision that allows or provides for the election of the chair of the committee of the whole at the initial organization meeting each year on the first Monday of January. The current ordinance provides for the election of the president and vice president, but not the committee, the chair of the committee of the whole. We've been doing that for years. So again, it's basically a technical, a technical change to coincide with what we actually do. And finally, we provided a definition and context for the word special resolution and condemnation resolution. These are non-legislative resolutions that come to the council such as the special resolution for Congresswoman Walorsky tonight. They do not call for individual or roll call votes. There's no public input on those resolutions. So it's, again, it's just to clarify what we have been doing in the past, but has never gotten into the words of the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Council members, do we have any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
There was some discussion earlier today regarding equating the requirements of reporting to the council committee chair so that the administration was following the same procedures. Is there something in the ordinance to make sure that that is happening?
Correct. That's Section Five of that ordinance. It requires that the administration shall confer with the committee chair whenever possible. It's the same language that's included in the following Section Six, referring to the council members.
Yeah, I have a question.
This does not read "whenever possible."
Section... Two point nine V...
V six?
V five. Says resolutions or ordinances proposed by the city administration shall, when at all possible. Six says... You're correct. Councilmember Hammond. That was apparently...
Is it possible to amend that?
Pardon me?
So that the administration is held to the same guidelines as the council?
Well, the council section, Section Six, resolution or ordinance is proposed by one or more council members shall... Excuse me, I'm looking at my handwritten version. Let me pull up the amendments. Councilmember Niskoski?
Yep, I'd be happy to answer that.
Pardon me?
I would be happy to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in Section Two dash nine V five, in the previous, that we had in the previous committee meeting where it says the city administration should, when at all possible, I had that changed to shall, and that was the only change in that particular section. And the reason being is, most of the times, they already know who that's going to. They've already addressed the chair of that committee. And if there's anything they do have that has to be on a shorter notice, I didn't want to hold anything up for them. Like when we had a snafu with a resolution that had to do with, oh, Deveraux Peters comes to mind. They already know who that person is. Doesn't have to have the signature of the chair to do that. The council already knows what's coming out on that. What this is trying to address is how council members communicate resolutions and ordinances for better communication. And as has been pointed out many times, what's the process? What does that look like? So this is just clarifying that. In Section Six, what this is, the aim of this is, is for the chairperson of the standing committee to be notified by that person that has the jurisdiction over the ordinance or the resolution. It's not for them to pass judgment on if they like it or not. It's just for them to be acknowledged. So for example, if this language wasn't in here, that person, whoever the council member may be, could still file it with the clerk's office and the chair of that standing committee wouldn't have no idea. All this does is say, this is a notification to the chair of that standing committee that they are going to have a resolution or an ordinance come before the committee. So it helps promote dialogue. So they'll look to see the cover letter intent. They look at it, yep, okay, yep, you've showed it to me. And then it gets filed with the clerk's office, which is in Section Two dash nine V three, which they can reject it if it's not all there in its entirety, meaning the cover letter intent and that it's organized properly. If they happen to miss that, it also gives the president, the council president, who sets the agenda with the clerk, the power to reject that. So basically, it's going to be seen by the standing committee chair and then it can be filed with the clerk's office. So if we didn't have that, there'd still be circumventing the chairs.
I agree wholeheartedly with the amendments to Number Six, but I understood that the administration would be held to the same parameters as the elected officials on the council.
No, this was, this was, there has never been, that I'm aware of, any issues with the administration providing the chairs notification of what it is they're doing or filing. It does say that they shall, when at all possible and in the interest of furthering better communications. And so that dialogue has been had for them to please do that so we can have better communication for us, the administration, the clerk's office, and for the residents that reside in the city of South Bend.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay. Councilman Davis?
Thank you, sir. I, 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 I don't agree. And the reason why I don't agree is because there is a timeline that's already set. There is a following deadline at twelve noon. I think it's twelve noon on the Wednesday prior to the council meeting. Then you have Thursday, you have Friday, you have Saturday, then you have Sunday, and then you even all have most of the day on Monday. Now, that chair is responsible for the function of that committee. If that chair does not read their notes or packet, it's not the fault of the sponsor or the person who brought the bill forward if they didn't choose to do their work. It's the fault of the chair. It's not the fault of the person who brought the work forward. Now, I'm not against progressive conversation, but if I am the chair, I'm responsible for my committee. I'm not making someone who's bringing legislation forward responsible for that legislation. Their responsibility is to get as many votes as they can in order to get that piece of legislation passed. I don't know how it has turned to a person who brings legislation forward has to get it signed off. I can say that Henry doesn't work for the South Bend Common Council. Henry works for the District Two residents who elected him to office. My signature comes from them. It doesn't come from the people that I work with. Do I and should I have reasonable and responsible conversations with my colleagues? Absolutely. But putting it on paper in black and white in this matter requires me to be a subordinate of a chair of a committee that oversees a possible bill or piece of legislation that I'm pushing forward for my constituents, the people that I actually work for. I think that it looks like a conflict. It turns into another discussion about me appeasing someone or needing someone to be happy with what I'm pushing forward in order for it to get a signature. That's unfair. If I have an alt with someone or someone has an alt with me and that piece of legislation is going through their committee, chances are, they're not signing off. And so the voice of my district is quieted or paused because of the alt that person and I have between each other. We can't do legislation like this. I went to court again about freedom of speech some years ago when some South Bend officers and county officers tried to sue me for writing a letter to the Department of Justice on council letterhead because my name was on council letterhead. They said I needed permission from my council colleagues. I don't need permission from my council colleagues if my name is on the letterhead. So we went round and round for about two or three years, probably even more than that, and then it came back that I didn't defame them. The judge said that. This is not Henry. The judge said that. Because I had the ability of freedom of speech, because I am an elected official, I am allowed these things. And he listed them out. So I don't know how we're back here again. I, I, I don't know how we're back here again. And so if I do file a piece of legislation, this is a question. The clerk does or does not make a phone call to the committee assignment, the chair of the committee, or it just goes through the regular way and then you get the email? How does that work?
May I answer that, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. First, I'll go to your first question in reference to the notification of the chair. It has been brought before this council numerous times when there's been a resolution brought forth. You know, was the chair notified? Did you have dialogue with this person? That always comes up.
Yeah, but who brought that up?
If I may please finish...
We can have dialogue here. I'm just saying, but who brought that up?
But that's improper. You spoke and now I get to speak. So please let me speak. I'm speaking. Please let me make my statement so I can answer your questions.
But that's never been a rule of this council. I've been here. So you're coming up with a rule that never existed to say that it was a rule.
I would like to make my statement.
Councilman Davis, let's, please, please.
I am speaking. I let you speak. I did not interrupt you. Please do not interrupt me.
You got it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. First of all, it has been brought up before this council before about that. You yourself have challenged us in this chair about, is that proper? What's the procedure? All we're trying to do is outline the procedure so it's clear to everyone. So that has to do with notifying the chair. That's all it is. The chair isn't to judge what's being brought in front of you, whether they like it or not, just saying, yes, the chair has been notified. When it goes to be filed with the clerk's office, the clerk receives that filing, file stamps it, and then there is an agenda meeting. And all of everything that's been filed with the clerk is then discussed with President McBride or whoever the residing president may be at that time to make sure that everything that has been properly received makes it to the agenda. There has been discussion over what's been stamped. Oh, he was just a little late. Well, the filing letter will come later. That has to stop. So what this does is set a very, the protocols in order. If for some reason the clerk were not to catch that and the president did, the president may reject the filing. Because if it's not complete when it comes to the clerk, it should not make it on the agenda. This is a means to try and spur better dialogue amongst council members. This isn't meant in any other way other than a courtesy for the chair to ensure that, yep, okay, go ahead. We're going to file it. And if there is a dispute, well, then it would, if they're saying this isn't in my jurisdiction, you have it in the wrong committee, then that would spur further dialogue. Perhaps it was in the wrong one. That would spur a conversation with the president. You can have it put into a different committee. It's not meant to be a barrier at all or to circumvent any one of us as council members to put forth a resolution or an ordinance. So this was designed in a way to be a clear process that everybody understands.
That's how it reads, Councilmember Niskoski. It says that I, but it says I need a signature from the chair. Am I reading this wrong or am I reading this right?
You're, you're reading it correct.
Okay, so in order for me to get a signature, I have to call that council member, whoever is over the committee, and say, hey, I got a bill and I need your signature. That's not the same as me just filing the bill and just notifying. That means that person, whoever I'm calling, has to sign off and give an okay to the bill. Because that's what it says.
It's just an okay that, yes, you have notified the chair.
It's just not an okay. It's saying that that person is signing off on my work. That's not a okay.
And there is a stamp in the clerk's office.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's a quick email to say, yep, I've, they've, they have notified me. I know about this bill. Okay, fine. And then they can be filed.
That's, that's, that's...
That's what I'm proposing in this.
That's wrong. You can't tell me, but you cannot tell me how to go about my work if it's in proper framework of what is already a part of the clerk's office. If I have to go and ask you for a signature to say that I can move forward with this bill, that means I'm working for you. That's what that means. That means I no longer work for the residents that voted me in office. That means I'm working for you because you're saying it's okay for you to move forward. That's unfair.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments and at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. I, just a quick question for our attorney. Thank you for giving further definition. I'm, I'm in Section Two dash nine Y in the definitions of the special condemnation resolution. Just for clarification, both the special resolutions and the special proclamations recognize individual groups or organizations, but the differences between Y and Z is that Y may be addressed in the agenda, in the council agenda, whereas special proclamations are not.
Correct. Special proclamations are also on behalf of one or more council members presented outside of a council meeting. I've seen a lot of examples such as presenting at funerals, which would not be necessarily proper in this setting.
A retirement could be the case? Okay. So special proclamations are not addressed within council meetings?
Correct. And it's, again, it's on behalf of one or more council members. It's usually presented by the council representative for the district wherever the, the person or event takes place.
Thanks for clarifying that. It does say, other than a council meeting. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So Chair, I got one more question. If the chair rejects that piece of legislation, doesn't sign off for whatever reason, what happens at that point? What is the process?
Mr. Palmer, would you be able to address that?
Under the ordinance as proposed, the sponsor would either have to request that the legislation go to another committee or approach the council president to seek remedy.
It can't go to another committee usually because the committee that's assigned to that piece of legislation or legislation goes to that committee is based upon the definition of that committee. So chances are it has to stay with that committee. So then I have to, or whoever will have to go to the council president and then do what? Plead their case that this piece of legislation should be heard during the public process, what we're doing right now?
Well, it would be whether it gets on the standing committee agenda and not at a full council meeting. But essentially, you would have to seek remedy from the president.
And whatever the president says, then it becomes gospel? Or is there a clear... Is it black and white on which it happened is what I'm saying?
It's not black and white. The Rules Committee, from my observation, presumed a certain amount of good faith from council members in complying with the ordinance. They apparently did not try to seek every loophole that could be found.
Now, you know this is a slippery slope, right? That these things are not black and white and they do not spell out what the process is. If you're gonna hold me to a standard, then at least if I fail at that standard, allow me to figure out what I should do next. I am being, or whomever will be, at the beck and call of whoever is in the leadership at that point. That's how it's being spelled out. It's not written down. So we're talking about good faith efforts and everything else. I just want to be clear, because my job that I was elected to do is to be a legislator, right? It was to be a fiduciary agent of this city. My job and my strength is legislating. And if I can't legislate, then there's no reason for me to be down here. And so if I'm being blocked from doing my legislation because I have an alt with someone or someone has an alt with me or for whatever reason, then I'm ineffective and I can't serve the people that elected me into office like I was supposed to. That's the only thing I'm getting at. And this number, what is it, number six? Does not spell out the ones, twos, and threes that are needed for a person who is a legislator. We just can't get up and arbitrarily say, hey, you better get your signature from such and such because, you know, they need to sign off on it. We need to be very clear about what that is and move forward. And getting a signature for someone, again, tells me that I work for that person versus working with that person. I don't think that it deserves a signature. I don't mind calling anyone. I don't mind having a good conversation with anyone. But if I have to call you for a signature, then that pushes... That's pushing the envelope.
Councilmember Davis, do you have a proposed amendment?
I believe that it should probably say the way that it was. Reason being is because it takes the authority out of the clerk's office, right? So that once, before clerk's office would make, you know, a phone call or email to whoever was going to be recipient of that particular bill in their particular committee. Am I wrong or am I right?
From my experience, I believe you are wrong.
Okay. Now, why is that?
The current practice and the practice as it's been for the few years that I've been with the council, not nearly as many as you have been, is that things are filed with the clerk's office. They have not always or ever necessarily gone out to the chair or the appropriate committee until after the agenda meeting, which takes place either on Wednesday or Thursday of the filing deadline. After the agenda meeting, the clerk's office puts together the packet, which goes out to all council members, which I believe goes out late Thursday afternoon. Am I correct? Yeah. So it gets to the committee chair late Thursday afternoon or Friday. That's my experience with what happens when something is filed.
Sure. And so maybe it was culture. It was all four years. What would happen with the clerk's office and with the council attorney? It would be conversation after the bill was filed. Those particular committee chairs would get notification, whether it was through Kathy Sikanski-Fair or it would be Janice Taubon, who was the council secretary at that point. I don't know what happened in between. I don't know where this got jammed up at. But getting a signature from a council chair, I think that that is... I think that's a bit misguided. I don't believe that that should happen. I think that things should be put in a manner in which there is a conversation. But getting a signature, I think that that's beyond supportive.
And I'm not here to argue the merits of the ordinance with you, Councilman Davis. It was an idea advanced by the Rules Committee. My job was to... The amendments were proposed by the Rules Committee. It was my job to draft a proposed ordinance in compliance with what the Rules Committee requested. And I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. I'm to answer your questions, as I've tried to do, on what the ordinance says as proposed.
Okay, so you asked me what would be my suggestion. Somebody just turned their computer down. My suggestion would be that there is a, maybe a cheat sheet of all the things that need to be done prior to filing. Or if it's not a cheat sheet, we can call something else that's available that shows the ones, twos, and threes before we get there. And this is what needs to be done by 12 noon that Wednesday. If those things are not done, then this bill is subjected to being kicked out or not being heard until these things are done properly. So it may have to wait another couple of weeks before it can be filed again. I think that's just simple enough. If you're asking me to get a signature, that really bothers me.
I think... If I may, I think one of the things, if had that been the practice with this council, we wouldn't have had to probably address it. But it's been routine that after the filing or after the deadline, council has been presenting resolutions or bills or things to be put on the agenda without knowledge. And that knowledge of the committee, until you see the packet, then the committee chair sees that it's on the agenda. There's no time for... There was no attempt or dialogue between the council that's presenting it or the chairperson of the committee. And a lot of times when they see it on the committee, it ends up being in public, tabled, or voted down without having a dialogue. So I think with Chapter Two, the overall premises, not just with administration and council, but mainly within council, there has been a breakdown of communication within ourselves. That there's... We need to follow a process. So like you said, when it's 12 o'clock deadline, their bill's coming in after 12 o'clock. The clerk is filing it. There's no notification given, so that's after the fact. And as the president and anyone going forward, that at that deadline at 12 o'clock, if there's nothing, if it was not stamped and turned in, it should not go on the agenda. And it has been a pattern of going on the agenda without it being discussed or notified. So we addressed it along with the other changes that we're doing.
So she shouldn't receive anything after 12 o'clock? Anything after 12 o'clock should wait till the next two weeks?
It should, but it has not been.
It should. Who makes the call on the next two weeks? The president of the council, am I correct?
That has not been the case. It has been the case of going on some...
No, but whose job is it to say that this can't go any further? We have to wait another couple of weeks? There has to be somebody's job. It can't be only the clerk's job.
It would be mine if I know that the information is going to the clerk's office after 12 o'clock. What has been some of the practice is that there's council that is putting stuff on the agenda after the deadline has been filed. And I see it as well when the packet go out to the public and to all of the council members. That has been a common practice for this council.
So your problem is between you and the clerk's office, not with the council people that are filing bills late?
No.
It has to be. You just told me that.
No, it's not. The whole process and procedure, if a council person brings a bill in late, it should not go on.
It should not go. I agree. I agree.
So that's why the language is in there.
So in order for me to get something on there, I have to get a signature, regardless if it's before 12 or after 12? Right or wrong?
For the council... For the committee chair to be aware that it's coming before the committee.
So I need a signature?
For the committee chair to know that it's correct.
That you're asking for a signature when you're... The breakdown communications between the council leadership and the clerk's office. That's not the person's fault that's filing the bill. So there needs to be a better communication path between you and/or whoever's serving in your chair and the council, I mean, the clerks, the city clerk. I mean, that's a simple fix.
It's not a simple fix. But we can vote on it because that's your...
Oh, that's not an opinion. I have a degree in that type of organization. That's the problem. It's not the council person that's filing the bill. I stand by that. And you can go to any book and read that and it will say the same thing. That's a managerial problem. Somebody's not managing the council or the clerk's office properly. It's not the bill.
Okay. I think we have this in committee. And that should have been the time for us to really do a lot of this debating. So we're gonna now move on to the public hearing. Is there, Clerk Jones, is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill 42-22?
There's no one in the public that has expressed an interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one... Oh, okay.
Reverend Henry L. Davis, Sr., 215 North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana. This is not a legislative matter. This is personal. I have never seen a council so divided in my life over a simple solution. This doesn't make any cotton picking sense. Look at your city. Look at the city of South Bend, east of the river. And you're gonna sit here and argue about something that stupid? You all need to resign.
Thank you, sir.
I believe Clerk Jones has her hand up.
I did. I just want to clarify a few things. The bills that are filed, the ordinances that are filed, come to our office before 12 o'clock on the first and the third Wednesdays. In the past, resolutions have not had that requirement. They have been allowed to come, you know, later than the 12 o'clock deadline because they were resolutions and not ordinances. Therefore, that's why they were put on at different times. The agenda goes to the council before it goes to the public. We send it to the council and to the department heads for their review so that they can see what is on the agenda, what is on the first readings. First readings are assigned to committee during the informal meetings. That is how it works. So according to this chapter, now, resolutions will also have to meet that 12 o'clock deadline. And that's why I believe it was addressed, was because of the resolutions, not necessarily the ordinances. People were good at filing the ordinances before 12, but there wasn't a requirement to file the resolutions before 12.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Jones, we appreciate it. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 42-22 is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements?
Yes, I would. Councilmember Hammond. I'm going to support this bill, but I think that the council needs to be very careful in diluting the structure of our city government. The council is a co-equal branch of government with the administration. We should not be held to more stringent standards under the same process than the administration should. Thank you.
Councilwoman Karen White.
Yes, I just wanted to... I know we're making comments, but the statement that Clerk Jones just made said that the issue was with the resolutions. And so that what we're looking at is how do we handle the resolutions versus an ordinance? And I just wanted to have some clarity on that as well. And I thought at one time that we were... This was Councilmember Wax's discussion when we last met was in regards to making sure we had continuity, not only with the council, but also within administrative structure. Those are just my two comments. I'm trying to get some clarity.
Anyone else?
Sure. But you can go ahead.
I just have a comment. I want to thank the Rules Committee for the work that they've put into this. It really got into the weeds. I know this was months upon months of work and discussion. So I want to thank you for that. I also do want to share that this is my first term on council, but even from day one, it has always been my understanding that ordinances and resolutions that are submitted by council members were due on Wednesday at noon. And I always met those deadlines. So that's what I had been told and adhered to them.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Davis.
Sure. And I'm gonna be as quick as I can. Just from what I've gathered, even from reading this and talking with other council members, to the conversation that just took place, it just seems like there's an issue between the council leadership and the clerk's office. And I wish that we were adult enough to get that taken care of. There is no way possible that this council, armed with one part-time attorney, is gonna be able to get everything done the way that we deserve it to be done. There's no way. We don't even have the tools to get it done that way. If Bobby hits with nine different resolutions from each one of the council people, there is no way possible that he's gonna be able to write all those resolutions and get those resolutions filed on time. So that means somebody is not gonna be on the agenda for the next council meeting. That's problem one. Problem two is that we all have a First Amendment right to be heard. That's Constitution. And the moment that we resign ourselves to believing that a committee chair can sign off on our ability to speak, even more so as elected officials flies in the face of our democracy. I said it earlier and I say it again, just got out of court with something like that. Nothing any different. And I don't understand why will we go back down that same rabbit hole if we have case study and case law that supports what I am saying? It's like we are driven to some sort of discussion that has no out but something that's gonna be wrong. It makes absolutely no sense. I just told you that you can't do that. And we're gonna do it anyway. So, you know, I leave it to you. But Bob is gonna be the one that's gonna have all the hurt and the harm through this entire process because he's part-time and every council member here relies on Bob's support and help. And if Bob can't get to it, Bob will probably get a lot of earful, a lot of emails, a lot of text messages, a lot of phone calls that he does not deserve. Either we hire a new attorney that can help supplement for the time or we increase Bob's pay and make him full-time. There's no way possible- There's no way possible that we can get this done with the same type of staff that we have right now.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
This is, uh, Eli.
Okay. Councilwoman White?
Thank you. Um, this, just to point out, um, the current language of the, um, of the ordinance says, "No bill filed for ordinance consideration or proposed resolution shall appear on the agenda of, of a regular meeting of the common council unless said bill or proposed resolution has been properly filed in the office of the city clerk on and before the Wednesday at 12 o'clock noon immediately prior to said regular meeting." Um, as far as the way I'm looking at this is, the goal has been to try to figure out a process, um, that we could do our best work. I don't know if this, uh, amended, uh, amendment to Article Two will accomplish that. But I do think it will. But what I would like is that as we go forward, um, we're not done with our amendments or our review of Article Two. And I don't wanna speak for the other members of the Rules Committee, but, um, as we go forward, I would be happy to look back as well and see what is working out of our changes, what isn't working, and be happy to go take a second stab at it if, if some of the changes that we're making aren't getting the desired result. Um, but until that, I think this is a, a good, a good option going forward, so I will support it.
Then I would like to speak if I may, Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to kinda echo what Councilman Wax said. We did take a lot of time. We looked at four other cities throughout the state. We took months combing over this to try and find the best, um, set of procedures for us to do work. And the work collaborated together. The way I envisioned this, excuse me, was to help us have better dialogue, spur, spur better camaraderie, uh, be able to, to work together in a more collaborative way. So I think this will get to that, and I'll agree with Councilman Wax. If we find that it isn't, we still have a ways to go with the, the rest of the chapter. We can certainly look at, at, to revise this. But it is my hope that this promotes a positive dialogue amongst everyone and that we do the work for the residents of the city of South Bend like they expect us to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Now, I would just like to add that I agree with that wholeheartedly. I don't, uh, business is business and I don't take anything personal when it comes to council or any wise. Um, when we come in here, we have a job to do for the community and I would never, um, in this position or any other, take a, a role on a personal level. So, uh, my job is to, uh, make sure that we are doing what we should be doing and that is communicating with one another as well. I'll yield.
Is there anyone else? Man, I would just like to say that I think that what, what we're trying to do is just create a way where there's nothing surprising us, uh, that people are talking to one another so that we can get things accomplished the best way. So that we don't have, you know, so many, uh, uh, train crashes, uh, as we're, we're trying to do, um, the work of the city. So I think that this, uh, you know, again, what I like the fact of saying, if it doesn't work, we can go back and try to figure out something that would work, so. Thank you. At this point, um, I will now adjourn the motion regarding, uh, subs- is it substitute bill forty-two dash twenty-two?
I'd like to move that we send substitute bill number forty-two dash twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
The motion is, uh, there's a motion in second. Clerk Jones, please call the world.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
With my reservations as stated, aye.
Vice President Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
This is politics. Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Eight ayes and one nay.
Alright, it will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please give, uh, bill forty-three dash twenty-two a second reading?
Forty-three twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various articles and sections of Chapter Seventeen of the South Bend Municipal Code to address late fees for city utility customers and renaming the low-income customer assistance program as the utility assistance program.
Alright. Is there a committee report?
Uh, yes, there is. Chair, bill forty-three twenty-two was heard in Personal and Finance Committee this afternoon, and it was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
Alright, is Fisher present? I accept you state your name, your address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. This is Eric Horvath. I'm the Public Works Director with the office on thirteenth floor of this building. I'm pleased to present to the council today some amendments to the various sections of Chapter Seventeen of Municipal Code specifically in regards to the low-income customer assistance program uh, that we've put together. I think these amendments will make what really is a great program even better. And, um, I'd like to go through some of those changes that we're proposing as part of that. Um, but I'd like to say, you know, at first, that, uh, when I started, um, we had some pretty daunting tasks in front of us in terms of a long-term control plan consent decree that was over seven hundred million dollars and aging infrastructure, uh, that had pipes in the ground that were built in eighteen seventy-five and pumps that weren't working. And, um, all of that, uh, takes rates and money to support the needs that were sitting in front of the community. Um, and it's a, it's a tough thing to be sitting in a place where you realize to continue to have clean, safe drinking water, make sure we're protecting that for the interests of the citizens. Um, it's, it's super important to make sure you have rates that can support that. But at the same time, you know that there's a population there that's struggling to pay their bills o- on a daily basis. And it's not just the unemployed, it's the asset-limited, income-constrained, employed folks that are there that are working every day, um, but still struggling to pay their bills. And that's why, um, when the state legislature changed about five to six years ago, uh, we were really excited to see that they allowed for the first time, uh, rates that could be, uh, put together in a way that supported customer assistance programs. Uh, before that, that wasn't allowed in, in, uh, going through the I U R C. Um, and so I'd like to, you know, say thank you, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sharon McBride and, and at the, or Council President, I should say, and, and at the time, Council President Karen White. Um, we're at the ground level, really, uh, helping us craft a program, uh, that we could create some uh, assistance tiers for low-income, uh, qualified, um, residents. And, um, and so we put together the first piece of legislation that was passed back in two thousand nineteen. And then also like to thank the entire council that supported, uh, changes to that legislation last year, which, um, added a fourth tier, but also increased the level of the credit that we provided to a point where, quite honestly, I believe it's one of the best programs anywhere in, in the nation. Um, so I thank, thank you for the council for your support of that program and helping make that happen. Um, I'll also say, uh, thanks to, let me just say, as good as the program is though, um, it's only as good as we're able to get people signed up and in the program. If people aren't actually receiving those benefits, um, it doesn't matter what, how good the program is written on the paper. And so, um, Denise Lynn Riedel and her team has, uh, really, um, spent a lot of time trying to, number one, make the, the application process much easier, but also to do a lot of outreach out in the community, um, going door-to-door, doing signup-a-thons, doing a lot of outreach. Um, and also, and so I, I say special thanks to Matty Rogers and, and Lily Schreier for their, uh, help there and all the hard work, um, they're doing to try to make sure that the residents know about these programs and can get signed up. And then also to Kara Grabowski, who's, uh, done, uh, significant work on, on marketing and trying to promulgate these programs so that, uh, people do know about them. And so those results are starting to pay off. At the beginning of this year, we had around sixteen hundred people in the program. Uh, we're around twenty-three hundred now. Um, we still have significant ways to go and, and we're still gonna continue to push. Uh, and would welcome thoughts from the council members on how to continue to increase that participation. Um, but I, I think, you know, the fact that we've got a forty percent increase in eight months is significant. And, uh, I appreciate all the efforts that they're making to make that happen. I mean, it obviously makes a huge difference. Councilmember Lee had asked about, um, where we were in, in different areas, uh, i- in the city. And, and I, I do know that, um, they've got a list of folks that they've reached out to for signup-a-thons. It's a pretty extensive list. Uh, it's Real Services, WIC, Catholic Charities, United Way, La Casa Damistad, Portage Township, Rum Village Neighborhood Association, River Park Neighborhood Association, Saint Joe County Community Health Workers, Veteran Affairs, Clay Church, Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church, Near Westside Neighborhood Association, Memorial Park, Neighborhood Association, Goodwill, Saint Joe County Public Library, Crock Center, um, to name, uh, most of them. Um, but by all means, would welcome, uh, any input on, on additional folks that we should be, um, we should be covering in, in that, or, or any other thoughts that you may have on ways that we can continue to, um, use the program to relieve some of this financial stress that's burdening our, our residents, in particular, our low-income, uh, most vulnerable residents. With all that said, um, I'm gonna go over the amendments that we have, which there are five essentials, uh, ones that we have in front of you. The first is pretty, uh, basic. Um, we've been kinda marketing and branding this as a utility assistance program, even though we initially called it the low-income customer assistance program. So in concert with that, uh, we will be changing the name to utility assistance program in the ordinance itself as well. The second one is adding a process for enrolling renters into the UAP when the account name, uh, is in the property owner's name. Um, so the issue we've had is we've had renters, uh, wanna sign up for the program, but because the account is not in their name, even though they're paying the bill, they can't, uh, receive the benefits of the program the way the ordinance is currently, uh, um, written. And so we've, uh, made some suggested changes there to allow for, uh, with some attestation of the landlord that says, yes, this person, uh, is a resident in this building and is paying the bill, that they could also receive, uh, the utility assistance credits. The third, um, is eliminating the poor family penalty. I think, um, we all are cognizant of the fact that, uh, people without means tend to have to pay higher interest rates on things, but they also, uh, end up paying a lot of penalties and late fees because they're struggling to figure out which bill they have to pay and which one, uh, is gonna be least harmful, uh, to not pay. And, um, and in the process, end up having to pay ultimately more because they have penalty fees on top of that. So what this ordinance would do is anyone who's in the utility assistance program that meets those income qualifications would no longer have late penalties. Uh, so it would eliminate late penalties on water, sewer, and storm water for UAP, uh, applicants or, uh, people in the program. The fourth thing it does is, uh, any customers that are enrolled in UAP will also not, um, lose their water insurance and sewer insurance benefits, um, if they're delinquent. So currently, the way the ordinance is written, the way it has been for years, is if you're four months behind on your bill, um, and you had, uh, a break in your water service line, um, by the way the ordinance was written, we could not, uh, fix that line. They would, they'd be on their own. And those costs sometimes can be, as you guys well know, eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars for water sewer service, uh, repairs. Um, so this would allow for anyone enrolled in the UAP program, uh, to continue to have those benefits. Um, and then finally, and this one is a little bit unrelated to, um, the utility assistance program specifically, but met a need that we saw based on some things that we had happen, uh, just, you know, over the course of events. And, um, we're adding, uh, coverage of our water insurance program to include the irrigation lines that, that residents may have. So these sprinkler lines, a lot of times people have, uh, a line to serve their domestic water needs, but also will have a sprinkler line. The problem is when those sprinkler lines break in the public right-of-way, they do create issues for us. And a lot of times people don't have the money to fix that, and so it ends up continuing to be a problem. And then, you know, we have an issue where we're ended up, we end up having to force somebody to, uh, fix a, a water line that they may not have the money to do. Maybe they don't even use the sprinkler line, um, but it's their responsibility from the main all the way to their house. So this program, um, would include our coverage of our water insurance program for, um, sprinkler lines from the water main to the property line only. It would not, uh, do anything from property line into the house, but at least the stuff in the public right-of-way would be protected so that, uh, we wouldn't have, um, public right-of-way damaged by leaking water lines that aren't being fixed. And, uh, it would also, um, take care of the, uh, the part that has the most risk for having the largest burden. So, um, what I mean by that is the area that's in the public right-of-way, under the road, tends to be the most expensive stuff usually, that, you know, if they're having to close down a road and, and tear it up and rebuild it, um, it can get very expensive. So those are five changes. Um, I, again, appreciate, uh, your past support. Uh, I do think these amendments will all go to, uh, make this program even better. And, um, and are things that, over iterations of just kinda learning from people coming to us and having needs that, um, that we feel will make this program much better. Be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, council members, do you have any questions? I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Horvath, for answering that question for us today. I'd, I'd also like to see by district, how, you know, where's the, where's the opportunity at for us to really make sure that we can get this information to people in our district? So if, if that's something that we can get, I would appreciate that. Any other have a question? Mr. Wax?
Thank you. Um, remind me what the, um, verification or qualification for, um, participating or joining the program?
The income qualifications? Yeah, so, um, to pro- to be in the UAP program, there's four tiers. Um, and so the eligibility cutoffs, um, are as a percentage of the area median income. And the first tier is, um, sixty to eighty percent of AMI. The second tier is forty-five to sixty. The third tier is thirty to forty-five. And the final tier is zero to thirty percent of the state area median income.
And, and how do we verify that?
Um, so, uh, there's an application program that we have. Um, and so, um, that application program asks them a series of, s- a series of questions that, uh, ask them to include all of their income. Uh, it could be, um, from a job, it could be child support, it could be other income. Um, we go through those questions, they answer them, they attest, and, um, that's what, how the program is set up. Uh, we don't currently have, um, any specific verification that we do. We're not following up and looking into W-two's or anything else to verify the program. Um, that may be something that we can audit later, but we're not doing it currently.
What are the consequences if somebody, uh, were to be inaccurate, whether, let's say intentionally inaccurate on those?
Not a lawyer, so I, I don't know that I can answer that, but I imagine, uh, there would be, um, legal ramifications if you lied. You know, we're asking them to attest to the fact that they're being honest and truthful about it. And we find most of these programs that, um, people are. And, uh, you know, I think, um, one of the issues you have is if, if we spent, um, significant amount of time trying to make sure that we look at every bit of income that every individual has and verify that, um, that we would spend more money doing the verification process than we would making sure that people get credits.
Is there a, uh, plan to do a spot audit?
I'm sorry?
Is there an, the intention to do at least like a spot audit?
Yeah, no, I think, I think for sure we will. And, and of course, if we find out that, you know, we, um, somebody's, you know, questioning, uh, you know, somebody having more money and, and lying about it, those are definitely things that we'll look into. Um, and, and, you know, at the time, if we need to have further verification, for sure we will. That's all allowed in the program. Uh, but in terms of trying to get through, um, an application process and make it uh, simple for people to get through it, um, and not spend the money on administrative burdens and, and try to get the money back to credits. and try to get the money back to credits, this is how we put the program together.
And I understand that the administrative cost of verifying everybody for a program like this would be probably outweigh the program itself. But I think it would be helpful, if not necessary, for council for the future, or the administration if they care, to at least have an understanding of a percentage of the actual participants. So if you could do a spot audit to, let's say, a hundred applicants or a hundred participants to know if, you know, a hundred percent of them are truly eligible, whether it's eighty, fifty. I'm not suggesting that most people aren't eligible, but if that were to be the case, I think that would change people's perspective on it. And I think as we're spending more and more money, or actually, let me rephrase that, as we're charging more and more money to certain residents to pay for other residents, I think it behooves us to know that the recipients actually qualify for it.
I appreciate that. And I don't have any issues with doing audits and having a certain threshold of number that we would do. That makes sense and would still be in the realm of keeping your administrative burden low by just taking a random percentage of folks and would still meet the needs of verifying whether or not people are being honest and truthful about their applications.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any question?
We're just doing questions right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just have a comment.
Councilman, Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Denise Riedel from IT has her hand up.
Okay. Denise?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Denise Lynn Riedel, Chief Innovation Officer for the City of South Bend with offices on the twelfth floor of the county city building. I just wanted to add to what Eric Horvath was saying, concur with his comments and expand. We are planning on doing a randomized audit of everyone who has enrolled in UAP, and that'll start early next year. So that's always part of, been part of the plan. And actually, whenever someone does sign up for UAP, there is an attestation with legal language that does say that they, you know, if contacted after they agreed to submit documentation, if, if selected for, for an audit. And so, yeah, that we, that's absolutely something we're planning to do. And we'll be happy to report back to council on the results of that audit, as well as compliance in that audit. And of course, if, you know, things need to be adjusted later, we can certainly work with council. I think the program continues to get, you know, better and better, just as Eric mentioned. So also, as Eric mentioned, at least nationwide for these types of, for these types of assistance programs, fraud tends to be very low. And so that's another reason why we started with this particular approach. And if things need to shift later, we will, but we will have that audit process early next year.
Thank you so much, Denise. Any, any other council members have any questions?
Yes, I'm just wondering, Mr. Horvath, what is the current area median income?
I actually don't have that in front of me, but I can, I can get you that. So it's, it's depending on household size. And do you know what?
Individual, it's seventy-seven thousand. Seventy-seven thousand for one, one person.
That's the area median income?
Yeah.
Did you get that?
No.
Caleb said seventy-seven thousand is the area median income for one person.
Seventy-seven thousand?
Okay, all right, any other questions?
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
That was for a family of three.
Yeah.
It's forty, forty-two thousand.
Forty thousand, then?
Forty, forty-two.
Okay, that sounds more reasonable, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, any, any other council members have a question? If not, we'll go to the public portion of this. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public which speak in favor of this, of Bill forty-three twenty-two?
There is no one from the public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill forty-three twenty-two.
Is there anyone from the public looking to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in opposition as well.
All right, the public hearing on Bill forty-three dash twenty-two is now closed. Council members, if you'd like to make any final statements, please indicate, and I will acknowledge you as I, as I possibly can. Mr. Wax.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I gave some of my comments earlier in committee, but if I sound like a broken record regarding my objection to our enterprise system being used to subsidize some while charging others, it's because this is probably the fourth time that we've, in the past year and a half, that we've been asked to do so. So it's a recurring issue that our enterprise system, which the hallmark of it is that you pay for what you get and that you're, that's exactly what the program is, no more nor less, you're paying your own way. But time and time again, the administration is trying to change that and set up a system where different people are paying different amounts. Some people are getting charged for things, other people aren't getting charged for things, some people are subsidizing others. There is a way to do that if the city wants out of their general fund to subsidize utilities, perhaps there's a way to do that. But the hallmark of this system is that you pay for what you get, and I, it's disappointing that we're deviating further and further away from that. And especially at a time that we are going to significantly increase the rates over the next couple of years as a result of the capital improvements necessary. It's, I don't think it's the time to start charging more to some, to subsidize this. And especially, I believe, Eric, you told me that potentially as we get more people signed on, we're not there yet, but we may have to go back and talk about increasing the fee for this program as well. So I just don't agree with the direction that we're going on this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Sure, I, I agree with Eli wholeheartedly. I, I think that there's a better way of doing this. And as a matter of fact, I'm going to go back to something that probably doesn't, it's not going to sound well to most people. But there was a number of, like, reports that came out about people misusing city funds. I don't know if it was ever corroborated or went to court, but there was a number of stories that showed up about folks who worked for the city that got extra money to pay for these utility costs. Now, whether it's prosecuted, whether it's going to court, that, that, that doesn't matter at this point. What I am drawing a point to is that the lack of management of these particular programs have to have a better oversight. There's just between stories of the last couple of years about what has gone wrong and what hasn't been going right. And for us to continue to make like the same effort, the only thing that we can do is get the same results. So I, I really would believe and think that we should have a better way of evaluating how we go about this prior to bringing to the floor and saying, oh, maybe we can figure it out later on. We just went through that in the last bill, maybe we can figure it out later on. I, I don't think that's a good way of governing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Councilmember Hammond. I just want to point out that the city's been engaging in subsidizing businesses through tax abatements for years. And the fact that the city has chosen to step in and subsidize those that are not able to pay for their utility bills, utilities such as water, which are life and death for folks. I think it's time that we give back to the needy in our city if we are going to subsidize corporations that have the means by which to pay their taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Council, Councilman Lee, Rachel Thomas Morgan. I just want to say I appreciate Public Works, Mr. Horvath, the administration's efforts in looking at every possible hindrance or obstacle to people having full benefits of the utility assistance program and addressing these in the updates that you provide today. So thank you for providing more residents this service. It's, it's, this kind of assistance we know is needed across the city. So thank you.
I would just like, I would just like to add that thank you to Mr. Horvath for his presentation and also reflecting back on the, people are disenfranchised or less fortunate than some of us are. And with COVID and during this time of raising rates or having people have shut-offs, I don't think that's the time. So I appreciate us continuing to help the communities, especially the black and brown communities and people who are less fortunate at this time that are suffering still. And so I appreciate the presentation and the opportunity for them to be, continue to have the quality of life services that they deserve and need.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. White?
Yes, I would like to echo President McBride's comments and to thank Eric for the work that he's done. And it's very hard to believe that we started this discussion, I would want us at least five or six years ago, looking at not only the city of South Bend, but other cities within the state of Indiana to come up with a program that will support our citizens, not knowing that the pandemic was going to be right around the corner. So I thank you for your work and also the support that you've gotten from the IT office and all of the different staff that have continued to work to make sure that we have the data, but also the support to continue to serve various communities within our, within the city of South Bend. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep, I might as well, Pastor Lee.
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you, Chair. Thank you to Eric Horvath for the presentation. Thank you for looking out. I know, like you said, this started about five years ago. The pandemic really showed the disparities that some people have in trying to just keep their water on. That also includes trash removal as well and sewer. And I believe you said right now, currently in arrears, it's one point seven million dollars. So clearly, there is still a need in our community. And with sixteen hundred in the program now, in a city of a hundred and two thousand dollars, or a hundred and two thousand people or residents that live here, I'm just glad that we're looking out for these sixteen hundred people, that they're able to at least keep their water on and use their basic sanitary needs in their home and have their trash removed properly from the curb. So I thank you for your work on this, and I do support Bill forty-three dash twenty-two.
Anyone else? I would just like to say that one of the things that I'm very most excited about is the fact that renters can benefit from this because we know that there's a lot of people. I was just with a young lady earlier today who, who was talking about, you know, the conditions and her being a renter and being misused by her landlord, so we're trying to help her. These programs, I've, I've seen Lily, who is part of the outreach program for, for this, out in different community spaces and some of the places that they've teamed up with Goodwill to be at. And to see people excited about getting twenty-five dollars off of their, their water bills. People lined up to sign up for it and, and, and because people on the lower end end up paying more for everything. When you start adding fees to it, when you start adding, you know, reconnections and disconnections and all of that stuff, if a person is struggling to pay to keep it on, and then they have to pay all these extra fees in order to, to, to get it back on or to maintain it, it can really cause people a lot, a lot of stress. And I know some people may not understand that because, you know, you may have it like that to be able to pay bills. I deal with people who are struggling to make ends meet with children and happen to make a decision of, do I eat? Do I, do I buy food? Do I pay this bill or pay that bill? And, and again, it is not to be just a handout, but it really is a hand up to help people be able to make it to where they can get to that point where they can be self-sustaining. And so, again, I was really excited about this being extended to people who are renters and working it out where they can benefit from this because it's needed. It's needed, and we know that that's the one thing that the pandemic has showed us, that there's a lot of, a lot of underlying conditions that are going on in our city. And if we can be responsive to that, that helps people feel like their city has their back. And hopefully, it causes people to be responsible individuals and help to build the city up. So thank you very much on that. And with that being said, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill forty-three dash twenty-two.
I move that we send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right, the motion has been, there is a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Seven ayes and two nays.
Okay, all right, Bill forty-three dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I now will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
I'll move.
It has been moved in second. Clerk Jones, please take the roll.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you.
All right, we will now report back to the full council.
The full council is now back in session. Bills were on the third reading. The full council is now in session to where this portion of our meeting is where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you please read Bill number forty dash twenty-two?
Forty twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at seventeen oh-two West Western Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill forty dash twenty-two?
Yes, forty dash twenty-two was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill forty twenty-two.
Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill number forty dash twenty-two has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you give substitute Bill forty-two dash twenty-two a reading?
Forty-two twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, replacing and amending Chapter Two, Article One, Sections Two dash one through and including Two dash nine of the South Bend Municipal Code to update and clarify procedures for the South Bend Common Council in the office of the city clerk.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill forty-two dash twenty-two?
Yes. Yes, this is substitute bill 40-22, correct?
Correct.
And it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill 42-22.
I'll make a motion for passage.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 42-22 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, would you give bill 43-22 a third reading?
43-22, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various articles and sections of Chapter 17 of the South Bend Municipal Code to address late fees for city utility customers and renaming the low-income customer assistance program as the utility assistance program.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding bill number 43-22?
Yes, 43-22 was heard in the committee of the whole and was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding bill 43-22.
I move for passage.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
President McBride?
Aye.
Seven ayes and two nays.
Thank you. Bill number 43-22 has been adopted. Resolutions? Clerk Jones, will you give resolution 22-39 a reading?
22-39, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, commonly known as 2722 West Tucker Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Steel Warehouse Company LLC.
Thank you. Presenter, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity in the Department of Community Investment on the 14th floor of this building. Before you is consideration of a property, personal property tax abatement, five years for Steel Warehouse Company. It's a declaratory resolution. The company is investing nearly $3.7 million in investment in a new cold mill, excuse me, cold-reducing mill equipment at its facility on the city's west side. With this equipment, Steel Warehouse would create 12 new jobs, retain 513 full-time employees, in addition to training current employees to run the new equipment. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. And also, the petitioner is here as well and would be pleased to discuss their investment, their plans, and answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you. I will turn it over to council to see if you have any questions at this time. Counselor Hammond?
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, what would you identify as the community benefit investment that goes with this abatement?
Thank you, Councilmember Hammond. Caleb Bauer, Acting Executive Director of the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This personal property tax abatement would add 12 FTEs and I think generally with personal property tax abatements, the abatement is only applying specifically to that piece of equipment that's being purchased by the employer. So, not only are they adding new jobs, but this is a narrow scope of the abatement. And so, we, Steel Warehouse has been a great employer in South Bend for decades. You know, we believe that they're a model employer and we think, especially with a commitment for new FTEs, that this tax payment makes sense and provides community benefit.
Any other counsel? Are there anyone virtual on the council that would like to make any, have any questions? Counselor Davis?
Yeah, you know, she asked a valid question and I don't think that we got an answer. And I think that this has everything to do with what's been going on here this entire time. Want to vote for it, but per the Department of Community Investment and all the other departments, when questions are asked, I think that it begs for us to go a little bit further than just what's surfaced. We know it's 12 new employees. We know that it's $3.7 million. Community benefit is defined as what? How do you guys define community benefit? Because it just can't be the money that they're paying, because that's a private business. They're working on making a profit. I got that. They're supposed to. That's where they're in business. So, when we as a city are giving up tax dollars and tax time, there has to be a community benefit, just not the jobs. Those jobs are sometimes specialized or not, or if somebody has the ability to apply for a job and get it, they win it, great deal. But there, the community benefit, as I understand it, has always been other things that the entire community can share in, just not the 12 jobs, sir.
Were this abatement not to be approved, conceivably, the employer might not make this investment. So, those 12 new jobs wouldn't be created. The $3.7 million wouldn't be invested in the new equipment and therefore, the proceeds from the personal property taxes that are paid over the lifetime of the abatement and after the abatement would also not be realized. With this abatement, the net tax over the five-year period on the equipment is $45,000. So, that's $45,000 in personal property taxes paid that would otherwise not be paid if this equipment were not purchased. And then after the lifetime of the abatement, which is five years, the employer would pay the full personal property tax on that equipment. So, I think that in addition to the jobs and in addition to the investment, there is a growth in the tax base that's unlocked via this tax abatement. And that's what we always look at and are looking for is growing South Bend's tax base using abatements. You know, it doesn't cost any taxpayer dollars to provide these abatements and we're able to unlock investments that might not occur or might take longer to occur otherwise.
So, the only way we define community benefit is through taxes or more taxes being paid. There's no other way that we define community benefit.
I wouldn't define it, I wouldn't say that's the only way that we could define community benefit.
So, how do we define it as a city? Has nothing to do with the business. It really doesn't. It has absolutely nothing to do with the business. I'm just talking about how we as a city are doing business. So, how do we define community benefit?
New jobs, private investment, and growth of the tax base, I would consider all benefits to the community. And, you know, I think the employer, if they'd like to share, they are active in the community and a number of their employees live in the community, certainly not all of them, but I don't want to speak for them, but maybe they can give a percentage of how many live in the community. But I think those are clear benefits for South Bend.
Okay, I'm done with this right here. Listen to this real quick. We just finished a bill a few moments ago, supporting and subsidizing people who could not pay or cannot pay their utility costs, right? And so, how do we marry those two? We have a tax abatement here, right? And we're working with the company to make sure that they continue to expand their footprint. Great thing. We have people, I think it was 1,600 or 1,400 that we just named off, that they cannot pay for their water bill. How do we marry those efforts as a city? Look, not today. We could do it another day, but I think that community benefit deserves a larger definition.
I think those are two things that can be happening simultaneously, which is the city as a utility is operating in a way that it is collecting payments for a service rendered, but understanding that the community, there are negative impacts for low-income residents who might not be able to pay their utility bill on time, would incur late fees, et cetera. So, that's one piece. I think at the same time, city government can be focused on unlocking private investments, creating new good-paying jobs, and using tax abatements, which cost no taxpayer dollars to do. It really can help accelerate job growth and private investment in South Bend. And that's how we view it and how we view every tax abatement that we bring before you.
Thank you. I saw the, some of the petitioners slide over. Would you like to make a comment?
Similar to what, sorry, Carl Parker, president at Steel Warehouse and responsible for this investment and this business segment. Part of the investment here too, as well, is from a going-forward standpoint, is reinvestment from buying commodities and buying other products locally, which would come as we increase our business footprint here in South Bend. And so, we would buy things that would also come from local suppliers as well. So, it goes beyond the investment just from in the equipment, but also growth of business that would be a further investment and benefit to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerry Lerman. I live at 1121 East Woodside in South Bend. I would like to advise the committee and anyone else who cares to listen, that in my lifetime, which has been quite long here in South Bend, I just celebrated my 81st birthday, I've seen tremendous changes in the employment in South Bend, of what it consisted of. There was a study made, a professor at University of Notre Dame, I can't quote it exactly, between 1945 and 1975, South Bend lost 45,000 industrial jobs. And we didn't have 45,000 unemployed, but we lost 45,000 industrial jobs. The difference between an industrial job and a non-industrial job are quite clear. Industrial jobs are higher-paying with greater benefits. They always have been that way. And one of the great lackings that we have had in this community is the decline of industry. And anything that we can do to enhance more industry in this community, I think would be a tremendous boost to reducing poverty, reducing the need for subsidization of individuals in buying utilities or anything else. Because the industrial wage levels have always been higher than those of service, wage levels of service employees. So, once again, you talk about a public benefit, I think would be a tremendous benefit. If we can lure more industry to this community using tax abatement or other types of inducements, and I hope the council recognizes that, and I think is very important, not just for our company, but I think for our entire South Bend community.
Thank you so much. Any other counsel? Counselor Wax?
What's the potential useful life for this equipment?
The potential useful life would be at least probably another 25 to 30 years. So, it's a part of the initial investment, as I said earlier today. The equipment that we currently have in place is antiquated and is in need of upgrading and allow us to be able to compete in the marketplace where we want to serve. This investment is needed. So, that is, the useful life would be another 25 to 30 years.
So, you mentioned in committee that this was an ongoing discussion whether or not to upgrade. Did you say that it's, the other option would be to perhaps close down this division?
Yeah, this part, correct.
How many current employees are there?
There is 10 current employees in that department.
So, this, so the abatement is helping decide not only about expanding to 12 new jobs, but potentially to be losing 10?
Correct.
Thank you. And what would, whoever can answer, what would the tax, the annual tax be after the abatement? I apologize, I know it's in the packet somewhere.
I'm sorry, the combined existing and new taxes after year five, which is the last year of the abatement, would be $41,000. So, as you see a slight decline after that, you're looking at at least six figures for the years following the end of the abatement. In terms of, in terms of what the exact numbers would be from year six on, those would be determined by the assessor of the county. But the numbers in your packet are simply just estimates based on what was provided in the petition?
Okay, so at least several tens of thousands of dollars per year after whatever.
That would be our, that would be our estimate, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I would like to turn to Counselor Thomas Morgan to see what the committee recommendation was for this bill.
Thank you, President McBride. Bill 22-39 was heard this afternoon in community investment and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. With that, now I'll turn to the public portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone in the virtual audience or here in the audience that would like to speak in favor for the bill?
I don't see anyone in the virtual audience that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition or in the virtual audience on bill 22-39?
There is no one in the virtual audience or here that is expressing interest to speak in opposition of bill 22-39.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. I'll turn back to council for final comments. Counselor Davis?
Sure, really quick. Look, community benefit is aimed at a specific need. It is not necessarily something spread across the board. I've studied this, I've read about this. It's a specific need. It could be the water bills, it could be the utility bills. It has to be a need that is aimed at and it gets those dollars. And that's how a community benefit clause reads. That's how most community benefit clauses read across the nation. I don't want that to get jumbled up in the discussion. And if, and if jobs brought people out of poverty, we wouldn't have poverty. You know that from working at the Center for Social Concerns in Notre Dame. Those two intersect in vital ways, as a matter of fact. So, poverty is an introduction of, you're born into it. It's based upon what the resources were prior to you even getting there, are born into it, but that's a whole nother conversation. I just wanted to make sure that we understand a community benefit agreement or clause is aimed at a certain need.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a comment.
Counselor?
Thank you. I just, I just want to thank Steel Warehouse for their commitment to staying here in South Bend and the investment that you've made in our community over decades and for keeping 500 and what will be 35 jobs in South Bend. Jobs are necessary. I believe that a thriving city requires that residents thrive with jobs and to be able to provide for their families. And a thriving city also include, must include thriving businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Niskoski.
Thank you, President McBride. I just want to first recognize Steel Warehouse being a family-owned business in our community since 1947. You don't have a lot of family-owned businesses that do what you do. And to have you in our community, we should consider ourselves very lucky. I would like to thank you for the investment, for staying with us, $3.7 million and an additional $216,000 of your own dollars that you'll be investing in there for a bay to accommodate what will probably be an economic spur of development for you once this is purchased. So, 12 jobs is 12 jobs, but they're good-paying jobs. So, I would like to, again, thank you for being in our community and thank you for that investment.
Thank you. I see Counselor Warner's hand up.
Thank you, President McBride. I would also just like to thank the Lerman family. I know these are not only good-paying jobs for our community, that they provide healthcare and retirement plans, but there's also, you know, electricians, bricklayers, pipe fitters that also do a lot of work in the Steel Warehouse facilities. And I know the family has always supported a number of nonprofits in the community. And I know the, the family has always supported a number of nonprofits in the community in many different ways. I thank them for their investment in the community and everything they do.
Thank you so much for your comments. I also see Counselor Lee's hand up.
Yes, thank you, President McBride. I just wanted to, to echo the sentiments of many of my colleagues. $3.7 million investment, 513 employees, plus another 12, $216,000 of their own investment, and then $45,000 of, that's, that's going to eventually be what they're, 41, I'm sorry. This is, you know, we look at Elkhart and we see that there's a lot of people who have to commute from South Bend to Elkhart to work. And we wonder why all of these great paying jobs are in those areas. It's because they're, they're working together. City and, 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 and industry is working together to make it a, a place where people can have good-paying jobs. And if we want to see South Bend transformed, it, my father was a, he worked in, he worked in Uniro. He worked, he was a factory worker most of his life here in South Bend. He worked at Studebaker's. He worked for Lock Joint. And I remember when there were a lot of factory jobs in South Bend. And that's how our family was able to survive. And so, again, I think it's, I think it is our duty to work alongside businesses that are looking to invest, stay here in the area, and provide good jobs for people to be able to raise their families and to be able to give back to the city. So I want to say thank you to Steel Warehouse, which is a West Side business that's been here, as Sheila said, since 1946. And, and, and has given so much to so many people. So thank you and I support it.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Counselor Wax, but I had an oversight with Clerk Jones had her hand up for a while and I wanted to acknowledge her.
Thank you. I just want to say also thank you to Steel Warehouse, and I don't normally do this. I've had family members that, multiple family members that have worked for Steel Warehouse. And I can tell you that they pay high wages. Therefore, the families that, that work for Steel Warehouse, they can buy houses, they can rent houses, they pay taxes, they pay property taxes for schools, support local businesses such as childcare, storage, utilities, and so forth. So the 513, soon to be 525 employees, I'm sure a large percentage, I can't say all of them live in South Bend, but a large percentage of them do. And I can just say from a personal standpoint, it has benefited my family. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Counselor Wax.
Thank you. And there's not much more to say after following up on all those. I just do want to, just on a pure economic metric, this makes a lot of sense. The city will end up better for it in their tax, in their tax base after this is done than they were before. But just to continue along the line of previous comments, Steel Warehouse is one of the largest, one of the longest, and one of the best employers in South Bend. They've, as has been said, they've been here for 80 years. And I don't think they have any intention of going anywhere. So I also, I'm well aware of the investment in the community that the Steel Warehouse does, both through their company and through the Lerman family. And to be able to partner with Steel Warehouse to help them grow so that they could continue to give back to the community, both through their employees and in other ways that they help the community. It's a privilege. And I look forward to much success with this specific project and in general going forward.
Thank you. I also see Counselor White's hand up.
Thank you so much, President McBride. Everything that I would have said has been stated and again, just want to echo. I thank you to Steel Warehouse. On a personal level, there are a number of members of the church that I attend that work at Steel Warehouse. And it's not just a job. They're treated as family. And they have been committed to this city, this community for years. And so I definitely support the tax abatement and I wish them well in years to come. And thank you for your commitment to our city.
Thank you. At this time, I'm sorry, Counselor Hammond.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the family for being here for the number of years that you have been here to support the city of South Bend. For the employees that you have treated with such kindness and financially supported them. The conversation around community benefit is not an insult to anyone. It's just a way of reimagining the ways a city can benefit through tax abatement. So it was never intended to bring out a bunch of ill will. It's just a way of trying to enter into a new conversation on a very old and antiquated ordinance that we have in our city. So again, I would like to thank you for all that you have done for South Bend.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
I was going to say the same thing she said, because I didn't want that to get lost. And so I didn't mean to offend or insult anyone, because I just keep hearing thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, as if I've said something wrong. I only said what I said, because I need us to start thinking larger than what we have right now.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 22-39.
Second.
Clerk Jones, please read the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Nizkowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 22-39 has been adopted. Resolution 22-42, Clerk Jones?
22-42, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, affirming the South Bend Common Council, Council's support to execute Order 03-2022 entitled Commitment to Designation of South Bend as a Broadband-Ready City. The Council's commitment to working collaboratively with the city administration towards the designation of South Bend as a broadband-ready city and the adoption of procedures under Indiana Code 5-28-28.57.
Thank you. Is there a recommendation for the council?
Yes, there is, President McBride. This was heard in INT Committee this afternoon and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a presenter?
Yes, we do. Rachel Tomas Morgan, address 114 Chavon Street, and offices on the fourth floor here. I and other sponsors of this resolution, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Warner, are both pleased and excited to be bringing this resolution before the council today. Especially in the advent of upcoming broadband infrastructure federal grant deadlines. It's really critical that we seize on this moment and the funding opportunities available for our city to expand internet access and to continue to bridge South Bend's digital divide. I think I'm stating the obvious in saying that the internet has evolved from a system of communication to a necessity for daily life. And broadband today is an essential ingredient in economic development and social progress for building resilient 21st century cities. On August 30th, Mayor James Mueller issued Executive Order 03-2022, committing his administration to seek the designation of South Bend as a broadband-ready city under Indiana Code 5-28-28.5. This resolution not only endorses the executive order, but it enables the city to seek certification by adopting and establishing the definitions and the requirements set out in Indiana Code Chapter 28.5. As the city administration moves to be certified as a broadband-ready city, this resolution sends a strong message to the state that we stand behind the administration in full support of designation of South Bend as a broadband-ready city and to capture the available funding that is, that is there for us. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the other sponsors. Councilmember Lee or Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, I would just thank the mayor and thank Denise Riedel for, as always, having us on the cutting edge of technology and positioning us proactively to be able to capture some of the state and federal infrastructure funds that are going to be coming down. And thank you for your work on this.
I would just like to say, when I was a college student in 1994 at Ball State University, I had a professor who, I had just come back from Japan and he ra, raved about the internet and that it was going to be the next utility and it would be something like we pay our gas bill and light bill. And, and we thought he was all crazy. And almost, almost 30 years later, he was absolutely right. And so for South Bend to be positioned as a 2022 digital inclusive trailblazer by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance is important. By the mayor writing the executive order, this is, this is a big opportunity. We saw during the pandemic how much of a digital divide there is in South Bend. And so for us to be able to prepare our city to be a better place where information can be shared and access to broadband technology is available. I was very excited about this and wanted to make sure I, I put all my support behind it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I also just want to add my gratitude to the kind of collaboration that is reflected in this resolution. We worked on this for over six weeks and really appreciate the collaboration with the mayor's office and our CIO, Ms. Riedel. This is an example of how administration and council work together to bring our city forward.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it to council. Are there any questions? I'll open it up for questions and comments. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Yes, the internet is a utility. Yes, it's a tool. Yes, it's a necessity. Yes, I'm going to vote for this. But when the city of South Bend had the opportunity to place new Wi-Fi connections in poor communities, mainly in my area of the second district and some areas in the third district, it did not. We went to other areas that had a little bit more connectivity or closer to connectivity for broadband access. So I hope, because we are waving the flag that we are friendly and we're going to be a broadband community, that we will revert back to some of those areas in this community and ensure and make sure that they have the connectivity that they deserve. It's not only a utility, but it's something that allows people to start recruiting employers in. It does a number of things. And so it, it's needed. So while we're saying we're, we are that, let's be that. You do have my vote.
I appreciate that. And I would just like to add that I was excited to say that in the third district, there are at least two places I was advocating, the Southeast Side and also Make South Bend was at that groundbreaking in the third district also. So those two places did get connectivity. And some of the other areas that was dispersed over in the South Side. So I'm glad that they have made some strides in that area. And I would definitely advocate with you, Counselor Davis, for the second district.
They are in black areas too. So it goes back to the same conversation we've been having all day today. And I'm pretty full today, because we keep having this conversation. But thank you.
I'm definitely saying that I would reach out to see where you would like that, to work with you. Because they did place it, like I said, in the Southeast Side Park and some of the areas around the Southeast Side and also Mission Walker Avenue as well. So I appreciate that. But let's get together so I can see some of the connectivity that you are referring to, so we can advocate for that. Any other comments?
Just don't forget about the sixth district.
Yeah, your area too. Yeah, your, your area too.
Did Denise speak already?
She did not, but that would be wonderful, President McBride, if she is on and she could answer any question.
Denise, would you please unmute yourself and you're allowed to give comments?
Thank you very much. Denise Sunriedel, Chief Innovation Officer for the City of South Bend, with offices on the 12th floor of the County City Building. I just want to thank council for their collaboration on this resolution and their support of all of these activities. It means a lot to not only my team, but Public Works, Legal, and the mayor's office and everyone who's had a hand in this portfolio of work. And I want to thank council for their comments too. The work, we've done a lot of work this year, you know, tripling open Wi-Fi this year and next year, applying for federal grants. But the work by all means, it's not done. And so I'm happy to not only keep up the work, keep applying for federal dollars to expand fiber in infrastructure poor areas of the city the private sector hasn't hit, but keep collaborating with council. And so I, I just want to encourage council to keep up those conversations and keep up the collaboration. This resolution, I think, goes a long way to not only making us friendlier to private deployment, but as several council members have said, makes South Bend a really good state partner. And a lot of the broadband dollars will be flowing through the state of Indiana. And, and also just positions us well for, for federal grant dollars too. And so just want to thank council for their care and their collaboration on this. Thank the Chair of the IT Committee in particular, Rachel Thomas Morgan. And encourage council, just please keep talking to your constituents. Please, you know, let us know if you have ideas and nominations for further expansion of open Wi-Fi and, and other collaborations we can keep in mind for the future.
Thank you for your comments. We were able to, the SOR Neighborhood Association, we were able to put in a request in that neighborhood. And that's how we were awarded Wi-Fi over in that area. So I'd like to just commend them for their hard work and the request for that over in, in that immediate area. I don't know if, I don't see anybody else's hand up. At this time, I would turn.
I believe, I have a question.
Counselor Warner?
I have a question for Ms., for Ms. Riedel. So Ms. Riedel, I believe the city just added 10 open Wi-Fi spots. Is, am I right in that number?
It's actually more. So we had 52 access points as of this time last year. And we currently have plans to increase that to over 180. So we're more than tripling, well, more than triple open Wi-Fi footprint by the end of next year. And so I think in the last month or two, we've added 10. But I, I think we've actually added more since the beginning of the expansion project. A lot of the first phase of the project has been installing access points on sites, VPA locations, as well as fire stations adjacent to neighborhoods, especially prioritizing neighborhoods with lower broadband adoption across the city. And also fire stations that hit things like transport stops and other areas where people might linger or need connectivity. The second phase involves a mixture of expanding fiber across the city to new locations and also providing open Wi-Fi at community partner sites. And the public was able to. And the public was able to nominate locations during that process. And so, what I'll do is actually drop in the link here. The, I'll drop in the page that actually describes the entire project and the timeline. And our team tries to update that pretty regularly for residents so they could see, you know, for this year and next year, what the plan is for expansion and see the updates, what they can expect seasonally, what's going to be turned on.
Thank you. Also, at the upcoming Wednesday's joint IT meeting, could you provide council with a map showing where the connectivity is?
Absolutely.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn to the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 22-42?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in opposition?
Neither is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. I'll turn back to council. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 22-42.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for Resolution 22-42 for passage. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We're going to bills as on first reading. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendations is then given. During the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. Bills on first reading. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 42-22 a first reading?
44-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Street Vacation: A Portion of the LaSalle Avenue Connector Lying North of Colfax Avenue and West of the East Line of the City Cemetery, Extended South to Colfax Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a motion to send Bill 42-22 to Public Works and Property Vacation for public hearing and third reading on September 26th?
So, move?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 45-22 a first reading?
45-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the Year 2022.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for Bill 45-22 to go to person on finance, public hearing, and third reading on September 26th.
So, move? Second.
Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 46-22 a first reading?
46-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2022, of $110,000 from the General Fund, Number 101, $3,348,550 from the DCI Federal Grant Fund, Number 212, $25,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund, Number 220, $475,000 from the MVH Restricted Fund, Number 266, $10,000 from the Indiana River Rescue Fund, Number 291, $161,819 from the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund, Number 408, $332,253 from the Urban Development Action Grant Fund, Number 410, $314,270 from the Professional Sports Convention Development Area Fund, Number 413, $1,100,000 from the Waterworks Operations, Number 620, $240,000 from the Sewer Repair Insurance Fund, Number 640, $785,000 from the Sewerage Works Operating Fund, Number 641, and $8,000 from the Fire Pension Fund, Number 701.
Thank you so much. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 46-22 to person on finance, public hearing, and third reading on 9/26.
So, move?
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 47-22 a first reading?
47-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Tipping and Loading Charges for Yard Waste Customers Within Two Sections of Chapter 16, Article 4 of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 47-22 to person on finance and public hearing and third reading on 9/26.
So, moved?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 48-22 a first reading?
48-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating, Adopting, and Approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2023 Budget and Levying the Tax and Fixing the Rate of the Taxation for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 48-22 to person on finance, public hearing, and third reading on 9/26.
So, moved?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 49-22 a first reading?
49-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Levying Taxes and Fixing the Rate of Taxation for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Meet the Necessary Expenses of the Civil City of South Bend for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2023, and Appropriating Monies for the Purpose of Defraying the Expenses of the City of South Bend for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2023 and Ending December 31st, 2023, Including All Outstanding Claims and Obligations and Fixing a Time When the Same Shall Take Effect.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to send Bill 49-22 to person on finance, public hearing, and third reading on 9/26.
So, moved? Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 50-22 a first reading?
50-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the Property Located at 832 South Bend Avenue, Councilmanic District Number 4 in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 50-22 to ZNA and public hearing, third reading for October 10th, 2022.
So, moved? Second.
Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
I'm sorry, President McBride. Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 51-22 a first reading?
51-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the Property Located at 506 North Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number 2 in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 51-22 to ZNA and public hearing and third reading on October 10th.
So, moved?
Second.
Clerk Jones, the roll, please.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Now, I'll turn to see if there's any unfinished business from the council at this time. Saying none, is there any?
Yeah, it's just a couple of questions, I'm sorry. And I don't know if anybody can answer this, and there's no one from administration that is here. The mayor is doing, the mayor and his department, he is doing like a budget hearing with the public. We've already started budget hearings. I'm not saying we're through them all, but does that mean that once the budget hearings that you're doing with the public, they're going to come back and amend their reports or add more into the budget or take away, given what the public is going to say or not say? Because it seems like that this is happening after, it should have happened before.
I don't, I can't speak for the mayor, of course, but I think that that's the intent with them getting input from the public and the community, like they did last year, that some of those things will change for them to come before council with community input. Now, maybe should it been structured, or I don't know, because I know that there's deadlines for those meetings that happen with council. So, I really can't speak without administration being here. And I don't know if anyone is online that could answer specifically that question.
I don't know who's in there.
It just seems like it's backwards. We would have had it before and after. Last question is that there has been an ask of the administration for employee surveys. We have not gotten any employee surveys. They committed to it. They said it was going to happen. We're having budget hearings. We've already been through, what, three departments already? Got another one Wednesday, and we still do not have any employee surveys about anything that we've asked for. I don't know who makes that request on our behalf. I mean, if we weren't working together, then we should work together. We've asked for something, then we should get it. I mean, they get everything that they asked for.
I will follow up. I don't know when that happened during my absence, but I will follow up with the vice president and the clerk's office.
Actually, it was, they committed to it last budget, was last year, it was last year.
I'll follow up. Thank you for that, those-
Thank you.
At this time, I'll turn to new business. Is there any new business from council? If not, we'll go to the privilege of the floor. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on today's agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review, and topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak at privilege of the floor?
There is no one from the virtual public that's expressing interest to speak on privilege of the floor.
Thank you. With that, we stand adjourned.
Hey, Justin, could you do me a favor? I think these flags are set up wrong.
Same from one bet to another.
Uh huh. What happened? From one military person to the other? I think that the flag is supposed to-
Oh.
But could you research it to make sure I'm correct on my side?
Yeah, I can.
You could be right, because we moved them to take pictures. We thought we put them back right.